Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion by Mr. Keeling. Second. Second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item 3A, citizens' participation statement.
We've had no request for participation, Mr. President.
Item 4A, written communications.
We've had no written communications either.
Item 5A, military liaison update.
Hello, Mr. President. Since everybody was reluctant to say stuff, I got quite a few announcements, so I'll take their time. So, the trout season up in Fort Leonard Wood will open this weekend with a kids' trout fishing derby on Saturday, the 25th, at 11 o'clock, and the location is a stone mill spring trout pond. Also, Fort Leonard Wood in the Army begins our 75th annual celebration of the Army Emergency Relief Campaign. It runs from 1 March till the 31st of May, and that will be, you know, the Army Emergency Relief, which benefits a lot of our families and so forth and service members. Also, the installation is sponsoring a transition summit, which has a job fair connected to it, and it's open, it's on the 7th and 8th of March, with the job fair on the 8th of March at 1 o'clock at another field house. And for the young folks out there, the Davidson Fitness Center, on the 10th of March at 4:30 is the first of a series of lifeguard classes. So if we got anybody out there that want to be lifeguards at the various pools in St. Robert, either at the Post or Lebanon or Rala, there'll be a lifeguard class. And finally, for those runners, on the 11th of March, Saturday, we start our running season with the Clover Dash. It's a 5 and 10 K race at Davidson Fitness Center. Registration is open online at the MWR website. And that's all we had, in a one-minute blast.
Very good. Item 5B, districts' announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wayne, are you going to be at the Clover Blast running?
Right behind you, sir.
Okay. I'll meet you out there at like 11:00 or something like that, right?
You do the 10, I'll do the 5.
Okay. February is Career and Technical Education Month, and tonight, we recognize the Waynesville Career Center. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here and doing all that you do for our kids. And also, thank you, students, for being here. That's great, great representation. Look forward to tonight's Spotlight on Education. Congratulations to our National Math and Science Initiative AP students and their teachers. We were recently notified that our African-American and Hispanic students had the second-highest gains in AP in the entire state of Missouri. In addition, we exceeded the gains for all schools in the state of Kansas and of all Army-affiliated schools in the NMC Network. Our Waynesville students had the highest increase in AP qualifying scores. Great job, so excellent job, teachers. We sure appreciate all you're doing. I'd also like to recognize our entire faculty for their diligence in the classroom. We were recently featured in a study by the Lexington Institute focusing on effectively educating military children. Our district received a great deal of attention for effective practices in the classroom, and I appreciate all of our teachers and all you're doing for our students. The Waynesville R6 School District was recognized as the Volunteer Organization of the Year by the Waynesville-St. Robert Chamber of Commerce on February 10th, and we are so proud of our students who are serving in internships at the Chamber and who helped produce the Chamber Awards banquet presentation. The Waynesville JROTC Tiger Drill Team attended the Smith Cotton Competition on Saturday, February the 18th, and finished first overall in the ARM category and were named the overall ARM champion for the second year in a row. The district will host several fine arts performances that are open to the public between now and May 18th, but I want to highlight that we will have our annual district-wide art show on Sunday, March 5th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. in the Waynesville Career Center. The pageant of bands will begin at 6:00 p.m. March 7th in the Waynesville High School gym. Upcoming dates, March 20th through 24th will be spring break, and there'll be no school. I can tell a look of firm disgust on our crowd in the back. Oh, no, no, we got thumbs up instead, okay. Graduation remains Friday, May 19th, however, because of our inclement weather days, our last day of school as of right now will be May 26th. Let's hope that stays that way. As of today, we are exactly six weeks from the April 4th election. The Board of Education has placed a 20-cent school tax levy per $100 assessed valuation on the ballot. If approved, the levy will cost the owner of $150,000 home approximately $57 a year in real estate taxes. That's in addition to your current taxes. Personal property would increase nominally based on the individual's personal property. And finally, we'll host three informational sessions on the tax issue. Friday, February 24th, from noon to 1:00 at the Administration Building; Tuesday, February 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Freedom Elementary; and Tuesday, March 28th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Waynesville High School. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 6A, financials. Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Financials for February 10th, 2017. In Missouri Securities Investment Program, $38,159,795.47. CDs with the Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. In the general account, $3,413,289.16. Payroll account, $2,519.59. Insurance account, $178,802.41. Total funds for February 10th, $52,254,406.63.
We have board minutes from the study sessions, regular sessions, closed session, and special Board of Education meetings through the month of January and February. Items B through H, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Keeling. All those in favor by a show of hands, so moved. Item 7A, Spotlight on Education. Mr. Beachcamp.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. WCC is delighted to nominate Mr. Brian Schaffner for the February CTA Spotlight on Education Award. If you could come on up here, please. Mr. Schaffner is a tremendous asset to the Waynesville Career Center. He has one goal in mind, to make kids better at what they do. He works extremely hard every day to make sure each student is successful. Students leave his program knowing what it takes to work in the industry of commercial printing and what it means to have a strong work ethic. Mr. Schaffner understands the importance of career and technical education and is able to pass this philosophy on to his students. Furthermore, Mr. Schaffner develops a strong relationship with his students, parents, and colleagues. Here's what some had to say about Mr. Schaffner. "I can't think of a teacher more deserving than Mr. Schaffner. He is the best we have, let's recognize him." All his accomplishments with national medal winners in Skills USA. I really look up to Mr. Schaffner as a teacher and professional. Schaffner is the best example of career and technical education. Mr. Schaffner has worked here a very long time and has helped countless students succeed. Mr. Schaffner has done so much for our building and for Skills USA. We are honored tonight for Mr. Brian Schaffner to accept the CTA Spotlight on Education Award on behalf of the Waynesville Career Center.
Thank you. Item 8A, Proposed 2017-18 Certificate and Classified Personal Handbooks. First reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed 2017-2018 certificated and classified personal handbooks are presented for the Board for review as a first reading.
Okay, thank you. If you have any questions, please get ahold of Mrs. Bales. Item 8B, Midyear Performance Update. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I will be providing an update on student performance measures. We'll be reviewing writing data, our district common assessments, STAR early literacy, STAR reading in math. The percentage of students scoring 3 or higher in the area of question on the district writing prompt increased to 59.1% proficient on prompt number two. This section of the prompt is scored based on the student's ability to address the topic of the prompt. The percentage of students scoring 3 or higher in the area of text evidence increased to 54.8% proficient on prompt two. This section of the prompt is scored based on the student's ability to use text-based details in their prompt response. For a little background, with our writing prompt, we do give this K-12, so we do see across the district that we're looking at similar things for consistency purposes. The percentage of students scoring 3 or higher in the area of conventions increased to 53.6% proficient on prompt two, and this section looks at students' abilities to use grade-level appropriate conventions in their writing. This is a look at our standards, and these are our K-6 standards-based grading and looking at our post-assessment on the standards that they have taught and assessed. The percentage of students pre-K through 6 scoring 3 or higher on district post-assessments increased 9% in ELA and 9% in math as compared to last year. Teachers are more regularly implementing cross-curricular lessons, PBLs, and STEM activities, which help students to learn at a deeper level. Kindergarten and first-grade numbers do appear low in ELA when compared to other grade levels. However, many of their standards are developmental and have year-end targets, so we expect the number of students who are proficient mid-year to not be as high right now, and we will continue to see those increases as they move towards the end of the year. At the middle school level, we have begun the more systematic collection of post-test data. As such, we do not have prior-year data to compare with. However, growth from pre-test to post-test is strong. The middle school is in the process of developing and refining their pre- and post-assessments as we transition to the new Missouri learning standards. The high school is currently in the process of developing and refining post-assessments as well as part of the transition to the new standards. In core subjects, proficiency levels on post-assessments were nearly 70% for the first half of the Students in kindergarten participate in the STAR early literacy test. The early literacy test measures students' early literacy and early numeracy skills. On the mid-year administration in January, 73.1% of kindergarten students across the district were meeting the benchmark as compared to 69.8% during the same time period last On the STAR reading test, all grade levels saw an increase from fall to winter in the number of students meeting the on-level benchmark. Buildings use this data along with common assessment data and classwork to identify patterns and trends for individual students in order to plan for instructional and intervention activities. On STAR reading, the percentage of students who are on grade level is lower in first and sixth grade as compared to other grades. However, if you refer back to the data on standards that was on one of the previous slides, you will see that first and sixth grade are lower at those levels as well, so that data does correlate. For several grades, there is a decline in the percentage of students meeting the on-level benchmark as compared to last year. For third and fourth grades, while the percentage of students went down, when looking at their average scale scores, which we'll see on the next slide, you'll see that those scale scores were only down by a couple of points. And so this would indicate that the number of students who, that there are a number of students who are very close to the proficiency line. For fifth grade, the average scale score is actually up when we look at the next slide while their percentage went down a little bit this year. When looking at the average scale score, second grade saw the largest increase from last year to this year. Sixth grade center did see a decline in overall scale score and percentage of students as compared to last year. However, when reviewing fall-to-winter growth, last year there was 3% growth in students meeting the on-level benchmark from fall to winter, and this year that growth was 4%. Last year, sixth grade saw a 45-point scale score gain during that same time period, and this year saw 52. So they started a little bit lower than last year but have actually made bigger gains, but their scores comparatively still look a little bit lower, but their growth has been On the STAR math assessment, all grade levels saw an increase in the percentage of students who met the on-level benchmark from fall to winter, except for fifth grade, which saw a small decline. At the fifth grade level, Partridge and Thayer saw an increase, Wood remained stable, and Freedom did see a 3% decline. First and second grade saw an increase on the percentage of students meeting the benchmark as compared to last year. While fifth grade saw a decline in the percentage of students who are on level as compared to last year, in the next slide, you will see their scale score was once again higher this year than last. Sixth grade has realigned the order that their standards are taught in within their PBLs, so we're really monitoring their growth from administration to administration instead of trying to compare it to last year. But we saw the same thing that we did in reading where last year, from fall to winter, they actually decreased by 2%, and this year they saw a 4% increase, so started a little bit lower, growth was a little bit stronger. The average scale scores across the district for the winter math administration have remained fairly stable when compared to last year. STAR reading, middle school and high school. In the area of reading, 61% of seventh-grade students and 55% of eighth-grade students were performing at or above the benchmark on the December STAR reading test. We transitioned from scholastic reading inventory to STAR reading this year. Both assessments provide Lexile scores. Lexile scores for seventh-grade students are 38 points higher this year than last year at this time, and eighth-grade scores are up 54 points. The high school does not do a mid-year test, so we did not have any mid-year data to review on them. And in math, the middle school transitioned to the scholastic, from the scholastic math inventory to STAR math. Therefore, there was not comparable data for last year. However, in December, 69% of seventh-grade students and 66% of eighth-grade students were performing at or above the benchmark. Next steps. Buildings are using the custom report data in Performance Plus to track student data and identify intervention areas for individual students. We are continuing on the curriculum transition to the new standards, working on developing unit planners. And in grades 3 through 8, our students are completing map practice tests, and there are test reports that this year that are available that let teachers know what skills individual students need to work on. And that is new this year. Last year, we did not get that level of feedback. Performance and growth continue to improve across the grade levels. Teachers and administrators are collaborating regularly and reflecting on student data to identify areas of strength as well as areas students are struggling with, which allows them to intervene and provide scaffolded supports. Through the evaluation system, teachers have been focused on student engagement, use of data in instructional planning, differentiation, and critical thinking. Additionally, there has been an instructional focus on integration across curriculum, problem and project-based learning, STEM, and connecting learning to real life, all of which support our mission of educating students for 21st century challenges. Do you have any questions?
Questions or concerns? Item 8C, CSIP Monitoring Update. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Included in your board docs here is just a brief summary of where we're at as far as our CSIP process for this year. Obviously, you've just been briefed on the academic indicators. Of course, we watch those very, very closely, and there are a few areas that we addressed just in our last district leadership team meeting that we need to go back and look at. In addition, we've been monitoring writing closely. If you look at our goals throughout the course of the CSIP, which will wrap up this spring, we'll see, you know, how we've finished up in our four-year window as far as growth and overall measures. I would say that predominantly, things are going certainly the right direction, and we'll be meeting most of those goals, but certainly, we have to continue to focus in the collaborative process, and when we see data that there's an area we need to look at, we have to, we have to address those things, which our teachers do a very good job at. This year, the foundational components of our CSIP are being addressed, and it's always a big process. You know, we, every four years, we go back and we look at mission and vision, and we look at our strategies and indicators and our SMART objectives and all those things. And you have colleagues that are serving on that committee, so they've been involved in some great dialogue. And so this, at this point where we're at, we took a, we got, we're a little slower last time, had an outstanding discussion on our vision and mission statement, well worth our time. I think out of that, what you're going to see is two components receiving more of a focus, one of which is respecting, understanding, and appreciating diversity in our school district. And I can say that I already had a meeting today talking about a diversity team that might help better inform us on some of those issues. In addition, wellness was mentioned as a key area, physical, emotional, intellectual wellness, and we even had teachers saying that counts us too, right? And we said, yeah, you know, everybody mean well. So that is really a brand-new thing for us, so we don't even have a goal area written yet or action plans or anything else. That's all going to come through this process. But was really pleased with the work that went on in CSIP in our last meeting, and we'll catch back up. We had some great dialogue and looking forward to it. I will say that you won't see massive changes really on vision and mission, but you are going to see some clarifications of points we thought we needed to make better for this year. So certainly, next step will be to dig into the goal areas, the SMART objectives, the indicators, and then start building those action plans. So it's been a busy spring. They've worked really hard. We appreciate that. We typically get about 50 patrons, and we have students on the committee. We have board members, we have teachers, parents, business representatives. It's a great cross-section, and I will give kudos to our principals because we asked them to bring that out to their faculty meetings and get feedback as far as the vision and mission statements go. It brought back some great ideas, and almost every faculty meeting I was in over the last few weeks since we talked about it, they were, they were actually discussing our vision and our mission. So very important process for us and looking forward to sharing that with you when we get close to completion. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions or concerns? Item 8D, Community Involvement. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I included in your packets a very extensive report on community involvement activities we have going on throughout the district. This is every other year on our rotation as far as the updating on community involvement, but certainly, outside of our district-level initiatives, CSIP, Citizens Advisory, all of our advisory teams that our departments look at, all the, you know, the overall district initiatives we have going on, there are some outstanding things going on in our buildings. And I think one of the clear themes, I won't reread the whole report to you here, but I think one of the clear themes that you see is, are the PBL activities that are starting to develop and really reach out and not only just showcase things to the community, but involve community members in the process. So really, hats off to our schools for getting that done. I just wrote a quick note down on some of the things that really stuck out. East, we're having STEM nights, Freedom Individual PBL presentations. Partridge had multicultural night that was very well-attended. Thayer has several PBL shares that's going on. And by the way, many of our elementary principals are at Leader and Me. So that was something the Board really wanted to see take off this summer, so they're at training right now, per your request, and they're in Kansas City right now for the next couple of days, getting trained in Leader and Me. So I do want to, they're not just skipping out on us. They do, they, I know they enjoy coming. Wood Elementary, Wood had a very unique, and hats off here to the Garrison. General Leonard Wood Army Community Hospital helped them develop a PBL, very integrated PBL. Students were able to go to the hospital and really experiencing some things firsthand, so great, you know, great PBL activity there. Of course, sixth grade center's doing many things with PBL. The mock interview seems to be the one that really, everybody jumps out and gets a chance to interview because they're always so impressed with our students and what they're doing. Middle school has now a first-grade reading buddies program that they're utilizing. High school has numerous activities going on, but certainly, our college and career night is always very well-attended. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go. It's outstanding attendance for a high school, college, and career night. WCC actually is going to have mock interviews coming up here in March, so they'll have their own mock interview format. PIC, can't say enough for Todd and his folks out there. They have developed several different initiatives with folks on Fort Leonard Wood, you know, within the Garrison, MWR, and working with different groups to do various outreach things. Piney is doing, actually doing some things within their school, School Spirit Days and things that have been very successful, special services, all sorts of things with LEAP and special education and all the outreach opportunities there, and even food service chimed in because the family feast, or the, you know, the family feast we have every year, very high-attended and again, was a great activity this year. So I really applaud the efforts of our buildings reaching out. You know, we truly feel like this is something we need to monitor. Survey results on, from the parents this year came back at about a 75% approval rate overall, which is very similar to last year. In fact, it's the same as last year, and we continue to use those things to help guide us in these efforts. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions or concerns?
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. President. This list is very extensive and very impressive, and I would like to thank everyone that's worked so hard, building principals working in conjunction with their staff and students to provide this service to community, students, families, and the district as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 8E, Evaluation, Staff Evaluation Changes. First reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The attached proposed revisions to the Waynesville Certified Model Evaluation System are presented for your review as first reading.
Thank you. If you have any questions, please contact Ms. Bales. Item 8F, Proposed Job Description. First reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed following-attached job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading. 3.02.6 Tiger Performance Head Coach. The following-attached proposed job description revisions are presented for your review as first reading. 2.13.1 Principal, 2.14.3 Assistant Principal, 2.14.5 Intern Administrator.
Okay. If you have any questions, please get ahold of Ms. Bales. Item 8G, Safety Program Overview. Dr. Berger. And I don't see Officer Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Forman. I'll be kind of pinch-hitting for Officer Lopez. He had a personal emergency, not a district emergency, but that he is attending to this evening. Wanted to, I can answer any questions that you have on the program evaluation, but certainly wanted to highlight kind of one of our most recent efforts in achieving our goals and objectives for the program, and that was we commissioned the CES, which is a partner of MSBA, Missouri School Board Association, and they conducted an assessment of school safety. It was a 30-point assessment, very broad. The final product looks like this. Now, this is all the schools. This is their, the assessments are all combined in there, so each school got a smaller assessment. This is about 300 pages, I didn't look here. Got a smaller package that has their individual school assessment in it, so we found it to be very useful. How that's kind of played out is, first of all, Officers Lopez and Alexander and myself, we went through each of the reports and looked for themes, took that to DLT, had them share in small groups, and some of those themes were signage, lighting, surveillance, communications, and gave a little bit of detail and recommendations for each one of those, but we made a priority list of those. And as the principals went through those, one of the things at DLT that Officer Lopez asked them to do was send him the, looking through the report and finding the recommendations for signage. That was something that was, you know, a commonality with every single building, so they sent him their signage needs, so that would just kind of peel off that one priority. After, that's being done right now, after we know the budget number for that, we'll start prioritizing everything else and probably make some purchases this spring to have us ready to go for next year. Again, communications was a big one. Entries were good, I think our MAG Locks that we've installed district-wide recently, they were, we got some good input from that, very positive. However, we did kind of get hit, so to speak, on exit ways, so we weren't doing as good a job there. But lighting was a big deal, but that works real nice with our energy conservation efforts that we've been making anyway. A lot of the times when we replace with LED, which hits on the energy conservation, it actually, we're always at equal, but oftentimes increased lumens, so we light it up even more so. So those were a few things. We'll be unpackaging that report for the rest of this year and implementing those things for next year.
Questions?
I might add one thing, just a reminder that if, you know, with the Proposition 1 coming out, part of that money is set aside to help with some of the improvements that, if that were to pass, to help with some of the security improvements that we've listed in there. So there are, you know, there are funding streams coming to take care of some of that in the event that it passes.
Action items. Item 9A, Proposed 2017-18 School Calendar. Second reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed calendar for the 2017-2018 school year was presented for the Board's review as a first reading at the January monthly meeting and was opened for public review and comment through December 16th. As a reminder, a few highlights of this calendar are: The open house schedules for all buildings are indicated on the calendar. Two evening parent-teacher conferences are scheduled. The first- scheduled; The first semester will end prior to the holiday break; Students will receive a full two-week break over Christmas and New Year holiday; One week spring break is built into the calendar; Inclement weather makeup days are not scheduled during spring break, which is always a favorite; Graduation is scheduled for May 18th, 2018; The last day of school is scheduled for May 22nd, 2018. So at this time, Administration is recommending approval of the 2017-18 school year calendar.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schultz. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Swant. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 9B, Project Graduation. Kiwanis request. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. The...it was kind of striking when I looked at 32nd project graduation taking place this coming year. The Board has always been very, very supportive of that. I again recommend to the Board that we make a contribution, the amount of $4,000, to provide a safe alcohol and drug-free environment for our kids after graduation.
Questions?
Is it going to be...where's it going to be this year?
It was...last year it was out at the Baptist...yeah. Out by...yeah.
If you come, you can listen to Mr. Quinn sing. He does a great job at the karaoke. That's good. This.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
A motion, I get on the program to sing?
Yes. We can get you there. Second by Mr. Schultz. All those in favor, by a show of hands, and I will abstain from this vote. Item 9C, Proposed Job Description. Second reading, Ms. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job description is presented for second reading. 2.22.5 Network Manager. The Administration requests approval of the above job description as presented.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Swant. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 9D, MSBA Board Policy Updates. Second reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. A wide swath of policies, procedures, and forms this time around. These have went through tabs. I have not received any comments, questions, or concerns from Board members, so I would recommend those for approval.
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. O'Reilly. Second by Mr. Keeling. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 9E, 2017 Summer School Proposal. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached is the Summer School Proposal for summer of 2017. Summer school would run from June 5th to June 30th. At the high school level, they would have two two-week sessions during that time. We will offer 120 hours of instruction at all levels. Transportation will be provided. Students will attend the school that they will attend next school year. With the realignment of East and Freedom, we are preparing for those students to attend either East or Freedom based on where they live and where they will attend for next year. With that realignment, it has actually allowed us to have all of the elementary schools going on the same schedule for summer school. We've had to stagger those in the past, so this will allow some consistency with that as well. The Administration requests approval of the Summer School Proposal as presented.
Any questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Anderson. Second by Mr. Quinn. All those in favor, by a show of hands. So moved. Item 10, Closed Session. There is a need for closed session as allowed by RSM 0610.021. Section 2, Real Estate. Section 3, Hiring, Firing, and Disciplining or Promoting of Employees. And Section 13, Individual Personnel Records and Performance Ratings. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I like that motion.
Motion by Mr. Keeling. Do I have...second by Mr. Schultz. Roll call vote, Mr. Keeling?
Yes.
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 Yes. So moved. Thank you very...